Why do counties matter? Simple. Counties provide the services we all depend on. If you're concerned about crime, get a regular flu shot, drive to work, take public transportation, or experience a natural disaster in your community, chances are, you benefit from county services. That's why counties matter. With America's system of federalism, counties are a key level of government, serving the people directly. So, do you vote? Had a recent hospital stay? Know someone in a nursing home? More reasons why counties matter. There are 3,069 counties across the country, with populations big and small. Most of us live and work in one. Even the nation's capital is considered a county. These county governments ensure that the food you eat in restaurants is safe. They care for the mentally ill, run court systems, build local economies, and operate 911 emergency systems. They manage parks and recreation facilities. And the list goes on. Thing is, counties serve the American people in so many ways, keeping our communities healthy, vibrant, safe, and fiscally sound. That's why counties matter.
Everything starts out small. The things that hurt us, they all start from somewhere. The words we say, the things we do, they can grow into something else. What was small and innocent can become big and sometimes scary. All it takes is one comment, one picture, one video for something to catch fire. But a big problem doesn't need a big response. Not at first. Even if we don't know what to say, the eye emoji can be that first step we take. Let's all pledge to take that first small step together and change the world in a big way. I'm a witness. And so are you.
If yours is the next big idea, and you need the right place to fine-tune it, build it, launch it, if you're only your best when you can play more than you work, if inspiration comes from the outside, you belong in Curry County. The westernmost point of the land you love and the edge between familiar and uncharted. Break the pattern. Be where the airports are as close as the beaches and industry and recreation never cease to amaze. Dock, dive, and dine in a single day and never lose your connection. This is the threshold of the West. Live where you can do you and do it well at the farthest point from ordinary. Curry County: Living on the Edge.
There's a shelter pet who wants to meet you. Meet one today. Visit theshelterpetproject.org. Adopt.
One of the things I really appreciate about our entire region is that we embrace who we are. And I think that's what unifies us. Once the timber and fishing industries collapsed, it took us a long time to get back on our feet. People didn't quite grasp the idea that once these jobs left, they weren't going to get other family wage jobs. And it crippled us.
Things were getting really dire. So we just thought that this was an opportunity to maybe look at that public land a little differently and how it could bring more dollars into our region.
The Wild Rivers Coast is so unique because there are more wild and scenic rivers here than anywhere else in the lower 48 states. The scenic beauty is just amazing. There's so many different places to go, from the national forests down to the protected ocean. And it's just a really special place.
I guess I didn't really know how special it was though until I moved away to Portland and came back and saw all the potential here.
We're uncrowded, we're unspoiled, and we're a little difficult to get to. But my God, why don't you come here, you fall in love?
We just thought if we could pull people to come into this Wild Rivers Coast and stay longer and explore a little farther into our backcountry, there was a lot of opportunities for them to experience.
I think our whole future is at stake here. This area is ready to go. We just need to give it a little kick in the butt.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We're gonna stand and I'll invite you to pray along with me if you want. We're gonna open in a word prayer. And then after the prayer, we're gonna have a moment of silence for the... You know, it's not good to be a crybaby when you gotta be in front of everybody. But that's what I am, so... For the family in Brookings that lost that young man, teenage boy, seventeen years old, in that shooting, so... After that moment of silence, I'd ask Chris to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this time that we can gather and do the business of Curry County. Thank you for the two gentlemen that stand beside me and name your name as their Savior, our Lord Jesus Christ. So I pray for our county and what we're going through right now with different stuff. I pray that you'd lead us and guide us and direct us in a way that would be pleasing in your eyes. Help us to have this meeting and be decent and in order. Help us to be quick to hear, slow to speak, and slow to anger. And I just ask most of all, Heavenly Father, that you would just be pleased with what we do today. And as we have this moment of silence, we pray for the family of that teenage young man. Thank you. Chris, go ahead.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, thank you folks for being here this morning. Amendment slash approval of the agenda. So get your pens out, gentlemen.
Quickly, Mr. Chair, if I may. My apologies to the board, I forgot one item. We have on the consent agenda for Council Pope to have a credit card limit of 5,000. So our Emergency Management Coordinator got a little envious. She also needs that credit card. I promised her I would have this on the agenda. Could we please add that to the other? And I'll read real quickly here. I would like to request to apply for a credit card with a credit limit of 5,000. Emergency Management currently does not have a credit card and the 5,000 limit would allow the department to purchase necessities during an EOC activation or emergency. Can we add that, Mr. Chair, at the very end of our meeting?
I'm okay with that, Chris.
Yes, thank you.
You bet.
And then I wanted to poll Mr. Chair Consent Agenda 5D. Just a couple of quick questions on the timber sale contract.
Move it to Discussion/Action?
Please.
So, we will LM? JJ, maybe in the future, give us some space after the cons...
We finally got you on something after five years.
We kinda moved stuff around, so... D will be M, okay. Is that it, Court?
Yes, thank you.
Chris?
5E, I'd like to poll. Spoke to Treasurer Barnes this morning, and he said there's some other things on there, so...
Move to Action/Discussion?
Yes.
That's fine with me, Mr. Chair.
Okay, N, 5... Or 5E?
5E would be N.
Gotcha. Do you guys need chairs, or you just... I think we're well regarded here. We got the door. If you need to leave, they'll move for you though, if you ask nicely.
That's all I have.
Okay. I don't have anything, so that's good. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second?
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say yes.
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 Motion carries three to zero. Public comments. First one is Mary Rowe. So everybody gets... Pardon me? Three minutes, everybody gets three minutes? Is there anybody in here that... Yes, bring it on up, ma'am. If you haven't done one, if you wanna speak, three minute. We have a red light, green... Red light, yellow light, green light up there. And if you haven't filled one of these out, go ahead and fill it out, bring it up to JJ, and we'll get it to me, and that'll be good. So Mary, you're first.
Thank you. I'm Mary Rowe. I have been a member of the Housing Committee until my term expired June 9th. Before Director of County Operations Julie Schmelzer left, I pleaded with her to form a County Housing Committee. The design that Ms. Schmelzer chose was people with lived, relevant experience, such as a member who had been homeless, a veteran, a Realtor, a contractor, a low-income senior citizen, et cetera. This Housing Committee did not work out for several reasons. First, members with lived experience are better suited to be on an advisory committee to a committee of members who have the means to create housing. Summer Madison proposed such a restructure about 10 months ago, and I helped her with that, but the BOC was not interested. Commissioner Pash was, though. He stated that in the meeting. This BOC did not replace members who resigned and whose terms were up, nor changed the ordinance so that a member could serve as secretary, et cetera, even though I stood at this podium and asked you to. So the Housing Committee did not have a quorum as it was reduced to six of the original 15 members. Public meeting notices were not sent that required 24 hours in advance, and I was repeatedly disenfranchised illegally as my ADA accommodation was not honored. This included my not being notified by... About some meetings that were scheduled at different times. One member has switched her category from North County to At-Large. At-North County At-Large, which expired in January 2022, to Faith-Based, and now wants to be the Vice Chair. She cannot appoint herself to a new position. Only the BOC can do that. A new person is shown on this packet's chart as being in my former position of At-Large, but he has not submitted an application to be on a committee. This is not acceptable county procedure. Votes have been taken, including people whose one-year terms had actually expired the beginning of January 22. And the chart that you have here today is not the original chart that was accompanying the ordinance. It is wrong. When it says 2023 for the one-year terms, it is one year wrong. It should be one year less. With a member chart newly created by staff showing one-year terms incorrectly expiring a year later than they actually do according to the ordinance passed by the BOC. When I pointed this out to our county's legal assistant, she agreed, but still has not changed the incorrect dates. That was over a month ago. Other terms should have been expired according to the ordinance due to concurrent and repeated absences, but were not. According to the packet, a Housing Executive Committee chose officers, but there were only two members who could have comprised a so-called Executive Committee. A Chair and Vice Chair, as a secretary was still supposed to be a staff position according to the ordinance. And besides, the entire committee was supposed to vote for a Chair and Vice Chair if a quorum had been possible, and it was not. The remaining Housing Committee members do not have enough collective qualifications to successfully work on the county's housing issues. In a year and a half, they've produced nothing tangible. Their meetings would waste county resources. Please disband the last refugees of the Housing Committee that you abandoned 10 months ago and retire the ordinance. Instead, I propose a simple, easy-to-implement inclusive alternative, a plan that will produce far more results in our county with much less maintenance. Part of this was Adam Briggs' idea, so I want to give him credit. Our county government would host a Housing Roundtable once a month, which would be open to anyone who wants to attend. Meetings of the Roundtable would occur on the same date and time every month, perhaps held in the county's Annex Blue Room, ideally suited to a roundtable. Mr. Brad Alcorn, who has proven himself as a competent facilitator during the budget meetings for years, has agreed to facilitate these meetings. Commissioner Pash could serve as the BOC liaison. This would engage our community. City leaders could participate fully. A community roundtable with an open discussion of everyone's ideas, plans, projects, and mutual assistance would take place. If you wish, I could put together a written synopsis of this with Mr. Alcorn prior to your next general meeting, suitable for your consent agenda, the details of which would be worked out if Commissioner Pash wishes. We have no time to lose.
Next up is David McCutcheon.
David, you have three minutes. How are you doing there?
Good.
My name is David McCutcheon. I live in Port Orford. And I'm here to speak about the plan for next to Port Orford High School. Their county wants to put in a roadside that will have a burn pit in close proximity to the high school. So far, I haven't known anybody in Port Orford that knows about this. And I've asked, talked to a number of people. I haven't seen it mentioned in the papers. Matt, did it get mentioned in the column at all? I didn't ever find it, so... Oh, it's okay. It is, and maybe we should have an actual plot plan with the location of the burn pit and the location of the high school in the newspaper. Can we do that? I appreciate it. It's not... You guys talk here, and the last meeting here, I got this column saying, hey, it's sad about what they're doing for our kids by the forestry department, right? Well, this is the height of hypocrisy to put a burn pit right next to our high school. We only have four graduating seniors next year, next class. I think there was 10 this year. And we just don't have that many kids up there now. The younger... Driftwood has a lot of kids. But we moved the middle school up to the high school just to keep the teachers employed because we don't have enough students. Do you understand what I'm saying? Putting a burn pit near the high school, and Boyce told me they're gonna be logging right up to the road. There's not gonna be a buffer. Summer thought there would be a buffer, so I'm not quite sure where that stands. Boyce also told me... Court, I'm sorry, Court. That the...
The housing project?
Yeah, the housing project, which I don't think is a suitable location out in the middle of, you know... I respect our veterans, you know? I didn't have to go to Vietnam. I was a little too young for that. But it's just not a great location for a site like that with a middle school and a high school right next door and nothing else around. There's just nothing else out there. And, you know, not everybody came through war experiences with all their marbles. I mean, and that's a fact, you know? So... Yeah, for any war, right? And basically, the fact that the north part of the county wasn't made aware of this situation, I brought it up to Mr. Perkins. He didn't know anything about it. That's our superintendent of schools out there. He did. And it's not... It's just a poor location, a poor idea. Court told me that it's really not gonna make the county much money, like $170,000, $200,000, which isn't all that money. I'm on the Transit Lodging Tax Board, and the county's doing pretty good as tourism. And I think we passed an addition to our strategic plan saying that this kind of thing is not healthy to the tourism industry, which is our number-one industry. So these are the points I wanted to bring up here with you guys today. And I will be following up on it. Thank you very much.
Mike Burns.
Hi. I wanted to address the Curry County Veterans Memorial. I know, Court, you had proposed 2,500 ARP funds to help the city of Gold Beach and the other two commissioners for, you know, looking to maybe help more. Thanks for your comments with regards to Sam Vitale and not having enough... That the city didn't have enough money to build that wall to get those tiles off the ground. Sam told me the same thing last year. You know, when this memorial was initially proposed to be built at the port versus now its current location, the city... Jody Fritz is the one that applied for the grants from the Oregon State Parks for $80,000 and pledged $5,000 per year for maintenance. As a condition of receiving that grant, they also entered into a maintenance contract to maintain that memorial. Now, there's... Tiles were sold to honor veterans at $100 apiece, which was to cover the cost of the tile installation and maintenance of the memorial. There's approximately 653 tiles there, which represents $65,300. That money was deposited, basically, into their general fund, from what I can tell. I have provided you guys with the Freedom of Information Act request from Oregon State Parks regarding the grants and how all that went down. That money needs to be... Needs to be put into a separate fund. And that's with the city of Gold Beach, who centered that contract. It shouldn't be commingled, and there should be plenty of money to maintain that memorial. All they've done is basically cut the grass. And after speaking with Matt Bailey, he donates his time and efforts and materials to take care of the memorial. So it's not costing them anything. There's no charge for installation of those tiles. And so the Gold Beach City Council needs to address this. I did speak briefly with Treasurer Barnes yesterday. Now, he can't interfere with the Gold Beach city... City of Gold Beach to, you know, do what's necessary there. But he says, yeah, there probably should have been a separate fund for that. I wanna look at having the... You know, I mentioned establishing a Curry County Veterans Memorial Committee run by the county. I am going to suggest that the county establish ownership of that memorial on behalf of Curry County veterans. The city is the host of that memorial on their land, but they don't own the memorial. And now you've addressed this with Oregon State Parks as well. They have no guidance on that, on who owns it. So the city should seek to establish ownership and develop Curry County Veterans Memorial Committee to advise. I would recommend Mr. Barnes sit on that committee as well. They've been robbing Peter to pay Paul. There's plenty of money to take care of that memorial. I don't know what the cost of the tiles. The city hasn't been very forthcoming on that. On how much those tiles cost, they order them in bulk, so they're cheaper, but it certainly hasn't cost $65,300. So...
Important to remind the public what the tiles represent, if you would, please?
The tiles are purchased to honor veterans that have served this country, whether they're Curry County veterans or other veterans. I mean, there's many veterans who were killed in action. Bill Farrell actually is the one that told me about the Curry County Veterans Memorial last year. And, you know, Bill's been dead for over a year. But I happened to find a newsletter that Bill had mailed me in 2016 that I never opened. And I opened it last year. And that's how I found out about the Curry County Veterans Memorial. A lot of people in Brookings don't... Aren't aware, you know? And so, you know, anything you guys can do here... I mean, I seriously think there's a legal precedent to establish the ownership of the memorial, not the land that belongs to Gold Beach and not assume the maintenance contract because that's Gold Beach's obligation.
All right, Mike, I hate to, but the red light has gone off, and I was more than...
That's okay, that's okay.
More than leading it with Mary, but...
Just thanks for...
I know you better, so I'm gonna say sorry, but...
That's okay, John. That's okay. No hard feelings.
Thank you.
Just give it some thought.
It is, yeah, for sure. I like it. Dallin is next. And I know Dallin really good. And if he doesn't just go by the three minutes, I'm gonna throw my coffee cup at him. After it's done.
Just remember, he's a Marine.
All right.
Wow, Marine Corps Recruit Depot, wow.
Well, I'm gonna unmask myself for cyberspace and everybody here. I am a local resident of good old Gold Beach, Curry County, and I am here to talk about our public libraries and public school systems.
Pull that microphone down, if you would.
All right. Yeah, sure. Paper testing, one, two, three. All right. All right. So, yeah, yeah, we better rewind it there, no. So...
You better get going.
I am a Marine. I'm also an American citizen, and I'd like to start with a short prayer, too. Lord, help me. Amen. One nation under God? Are we still one nation under God? Are we sure? We, the people, we, the public. Four letters, O-R-N-P. Organized Rebellious Nation, Perverted. Well, let's put the P in front. P-O-R-N. I'm sick and tired of what's happening at our five public county libraries. Public, not private. Our children, grandchildren, go there. And for that matter, the public school system, too, is letting all this crap, instead of the S-H-blank-T word, come in there. I am an actively involved grandfather helping raise three grandchildren. My daughter's a single mother, and I'm furious about this. Cartoon pornography? Give me a break here. Give me a break. How about some more letters? L-G-B-T-T. Lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender. And the other T is tri-sexual. Try anything. This crap has got to stop. This crap has got to stop creeping in. I brought a prop, it was a, it was, um, a weed here, the Oregon weed, right? Blackberries, that's what is happening in our public system. Three to five percent belong to the LGBT club. That means ninety-five to ninety-seven percent of us don't. We must peacefully stand up and stop this stuff from coming in to our public systems. If we don't, what's our future gonna be? What is our future gonna be? The try is, it'll try anything and keep, and this is worldwide, this isn't just Curry, this isn't just United States. The porn industry and the other industries are multi-billion dollar and they're going after our children, and we have to stop it now.
Thanks, Dallin. Lindsey Dixon is next. Welcome, Lindsey.
Good morning. Uh, so for those that don't know me, my name's Lindsey Dixon, and I was born and raised in Curry County. I'm a direct product of the public systems in our county, and I have an applied economics degree with a minor in English. I'm here today to comment on discussion item G, resolution requesting that the five Curry County Public Libraries take precautionary measures to guard our youth from premature exposure to sexual material. I believe that by even entertaining this resolution, we're neglecting our duties to focus on extremely critical pieces of the strategic plan that two out of three of our current commissioners helped draft and adopt. Some of those other critical elements include ensuring the county has adequate and sustainable financial funding to ensure core services, expanding the local economy, improving access to affordable housing, and investing in infrastructure. If this was actually about protecting our children, our focus would be on affordable family housing and sufficient childcare. Currently, the libraries in our county seem to be some of the most efficient and well-run public entities here. They provide and support more community programs than most other agencies I know of. Very frankly, I don't believe that any of our public libraries are unsafe for our youth to be in. It's embarrassing that we have enough time to discuss book banning at length. It doesn't support freedom of speech, and it certainly doesn't support parents having the right to determine what their child has access to. If a parent doesn't support their child to pick out books, they should be accompanying their child to the library, not banning what every other patron has access to. Historically, the fastest way to get a child to read a book is by banning it and saying they can't. We can derive a similar lesson in Adam and Eve's story. When we ban one book, we threaten banning many, as all content can be on the chopping block next. I will be curious to see which of our commissioners support this resolution, as it will show which of us actually believe in free speech. To end my time, I have a few quotes. Whoever would overthrow the liberty of a nation must begin by subduing the freeness of speech, Benjamin Franklin. Censorship, like charity, should begin at home, but unlike charity, it should end there, Claire Booth Loos. Any ban would provoke interested readers to move from the library, where they couldn't get ahold of my novel, to the bookshops, where they could, Philip Pullman. Everyone has an opinion, and the only guy, and the guy screaming for censorship may be the next guy to have his ideas cut off, Richard King. Censorship is telling a man he can't have a steak just because a baby can't chew it, Mark Twain. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruth Dixon is next.
We're not related. Hello, my name's Ruth Dixon, um, many of you know me, I'm a longtime, born and raised Curry County person, uh, too many pioneer families to mention. So, um, I'd like to start off, I'm, I'm addressing item G on the agenda. Um, first off, I would like to state that the idea of banning a book in 2022 is simply archaic and smacks to me of the Salem witch trials. The fear of the unknown, the hatred, and the inability to self-monitor is being taken away, and I resent that. I raised, uh, four children, um, I'm gonna throw my hundred, husband under the bus. Years ago, he told my daughter Lindsey she could not read the Golden Compass because a very religious aunt of his had told him it was not appropriate. My husband is not a religious man. I went and bought her the book, right? It's, uh, you know, he was standing with his aunt, and I said, I can't support this as a parent, we work together. Um, and he now understands that you cannot say, don't read this if you don't know what the content is. So, that's my opinion on that. However, I do want to say that I respect all three of you. We, I may not always agree with your views, um, and I tend to keep my political and religious views very close because, to myself, because it's not important what I think, right? So I do respect all of you. I would not want your job, I have no intention of ever running for public office, you simply could not pay me enough. I know all of you in very di, many different ways, Court and I have worked on wildfires together, he used to take me up to paradise on the jet boat, 'cause I worked up there for his mom and dad. John, I recently met you flipping pancakes at 4H camp, we had a great visit. Chris, you and I have known each other, we've set out in pastures many nights. Um, we all have different viewpoints. My concern with this being on the agenda is, this is something that is not in your control. You are taking what may be a personal opinion and bringing it to a forum that we've elected you to. Um, I expect you to support your constituents' wishes, and if somebody comes to you with concern, then you look at it and you address it. However, asking our libraries to change something when you have no ability to order them to do that simply does not need to be presented here. Thank you.
Thanks, Ruth.
Don Bemis is next.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ladies and gentlemen, Don Bemis and Deborah Salzman from Brookings were volunteers for the Wreaths Across America program that we brought up to Brookings two years ago, and according to their counting, out of the more than forty participating sponsor groups in the state of Oregon, Brookings came at number three with our total of wreaths purchased from the volunteers, the, the businesses and the public in Brookings, um, by the Vietnam Vets of America's sponsor group. The VFW of Gold Beach came in eleventh, and the DAR of Sebastian Chapter came in twelfth. So we're very proud that we did so good. We do outreaches at McKay's Market now, and also at Buy Mart, uh, once or twice a month, and the public is so generous that, uh, we are well aware, well on our way to make our goal for three hundred and seventy wreaths for this year as well. The, uh, commi, the ceremony is on December seventeenth at the WJ Ward Cemetery down in Brookings, and everybody's invited to come place wreaths after our ceremony. Oh, and according to the nationwide numbers, out of five thousand three hundred and seventy sponsors nationwide, Brookings came in at six hundred and seventy-two. So we're doing really good.
Awesome.
And we appreciate everybody that, uh, donates and sponsors our wreaths. Thank you.
Appreciate you guys. Lou Costa is next. Come on up, Lou.
Lou. Come on, Lou. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
A little higher, I guess. My name's Lou Costa. Um, I pay a lot of attention to bumper stickers running around town, and I seen one here the other day, it says, uh, bumper stickers, says, "We, we love our country but don't trust our government." In two thousand and nine, Barack Obama said he would transform America, and a Biden appointee recently announced that we have a new liberal order. This liberal agenda is about open borders, war on oil, supporting abortions, and now indoctrinating our children, and supporting homosexuality by putting it in our reach of our children's at our public libraries. The woke administration calls it perfectly normal, with illustrations of boys having sex with other boys. The Bible calls it sinful. In fact, a whole city was destroyed because of it. We await a county resolution to keep this perverted garbage out of our reach of our children by placing it behind the counters. Woke is broke. Um, when I was a child, I went to the library, and we were searching for books like Boxcar Children, Moby Dick, uh, other stories like that right there. I can't imagine how that mother felt when her daughter brought this book to her with illustrations of children having sex with other children, and said, "Mom, what's this all about?" That's craziness. Um, there's no talk about banning these books. It's supposed to be a state law, I guess, uh, saying it's lawful to put that stuff in the library. I think it's perverted. Um, I just don't know. I used to hear my parents and other people say, "What's this world coming to?" So what is this world coming to? When we've got stuff like this in our, in our libraries, in the reach of our children? This has gotta stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Lou. Mi, Michelle Arnold is next.
Good morning. See where the mic is.
Good morning.
Uh, just, I wanted to comment briefly about what I've, I've just heard. Um, I, uh, believe that most of us grew up in a time when most everything was available in the libraries, and we shaped our views depending upon what we read, mostly on what we knew in our families and what happened in our homes. So, again, my name is Michelle Arnold, I'm a retired licensed clinical social worker, so I was a therapist, and I spent most of my forty-year career working with children and families. Care a whole lot about our families and children in this community. I've only used the Curry Public Riot Library and the Chetco, and I'm very impressed by the strength and creativity of those programs. It's just like nothing I've ever seen before with the small communities that we have. You should be very proud of supporting those libraries. I'm strongly opposed to our government, our county government, becoming involved in determining the content for our children's art. It's easy and dangerous to confuse governments' responsibilities to children and those of, and those responsibilities of the parents. These are very separate roles. Parents get to choose how they want their children to use our libraries. Governments fund public libraries and the staff who are trained in book selection. You are charged with representing the whole county, not just a small group of vocal citizens. This resolution is an attempt to sidestep our library's processes for book selection and, um, public input. It is government overreach outside of the scope of your responsibilities. Our county's individuals and families are unique, with different values and parenting approaches. That's a really wonderful thing about our counties, is that we create individuals, right? Our libraries offer a wide variety of materials and activities to meet the needs of all. If individuals are able to influence our county on library content and access to books, we will censor materials that are wanted by other citizens. Again, your representation of all of us, not just a small group. Freedom is a foundational value for our country. My father, grandfather fought for it, I worked for the VA, I worked for the Army, I, I am a strong patriot. Please continue to trust and support our librarians, who have the knowledge, the skills, and the processes to maintain our libraries as places that nourish our minds and support freedom. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Sue Rose.
Talking young children here.
Dallin.
Yeah.
Dallin.
Yeah.
My name is Nancy Sue Rose, I live in Naseka Beach, I've worked in three different library systems, two of them on Washington State, one of them in Santa Barbara, California. I haven't worked at our system, but I belong to Friends of the Library here. Um, these are rhetorical questions to Commissioner Boyce. Have you been in any of the five libraries in Curry County? Do you know how books are classified and cataloged and shelved? To me, your resolution makes no sense, and parts are just not true. An adult book in the children's section? Uh, I don't think so. Um, if you would like to meet with me at the library in Gold Beach, I would be happy to give you a tour and show you how libraries are. Um, and this is for the public. Special districts, about special districts, which is what our five libraries are each individual special districts, and they were voted in by citizens of each district. They have nothing to do with the county. Um, the county has no jurisdiction over any of the special districts, including fire, water, schools, Curry Health Network, et cetera. As a library user, I want to ensure all citizens know that the Board of Commissioners in the county does not have a part in decisions of any district. As a citizen, if you have an issue with a book, a specific book, which nobody has given us the title of the book in question, so we can't even, thank you, so we can't even check it out ourselves. And secondly, in answer to some of the other comments, homosexuality is not something that is developed, it's, you are born that way. My sister is a lesbian, she's been with her partner for forty years, it's longer than anybody else in my family that's been together. Um, she was born that way, she's older than me, I saw how she was as a child, so wasn't any book that made her that way. Um, so, um, sorry, I lost my, my place. We are a free country, let's not chance becoming a totalitarian nation like Russia. Is that where you're heading? That's scary to me. Um, and on the second part, um, please stop the prayer at the beginning of the meeting. I was a Christian for more than half of my life, and even when I was a Christian, I didn't think it was appropriate to start a public meeting with it. We have, we not only have freedom of religion, we also have freedom from religion in this country, and I hope it stays that way. Thank you.
David Barnes is next.
David Barnes, I am speaking as just a private citizen, not a county official. Um, first on my list, please go back to issuing the agendas on Friday. Um, getting it out twenty-four hours before the meeting doesn't really give people much time to review it, to prepare to come in. As you see, people came in, when the agenda came out yesterday was the first they've heard of this whole library thing, and you see how many people show up. If you had, uh, given them more time, I bet there would have been more people here. Um, the second thing on my list is, um, the Housing Committee. There's not been a quorum meeting of the Housing Committee since October, I think it was, the last one. There's, there's been a few people, I, I've been at every meeting, but there's been a few people who come out. There was actually more people at the meeting down at the Brookings Library last Thursday evening. There was more members of the Housing Committee in that meeting than there were in the last Housing Committee meeting. So, um, I ask for you to change something with that. Um, I like Mary's suggestion about a quarterly roundtable, but what we have right now just isn't working. We've done, there's nothing to show for eighteen months of having a Housing Committee. So, um, I ask you to change that. And, um, the last part is, I just, when you start talking about censorship, Commissioner Boyce, you've been very proud of the fact that you've not, never censored nor filed suit against anybody in this county in the time that you've been in office, so I'm really surprised to see you jumping into the censorship pool with both feet.
Did you read the resolution?
I did.
And where does it say censorship?
Older guys, this is not gonna be a rebuttal.
He's a county official, and he's attacking me again.
He's a public citizen right now, he's speaking as a public citizen. Dave, finish your three minutes and...
That was all I had to say, I just, I'm surprised to see you jump in.
Censorship is ridiculous, Mr. Barnes.
So next up is, is it Kylie Evans?
Kelly.
Kelly, okay.
Good morning. My name is Kelly Evans, and I'm a resident in Brookings. And back in October of two thousand twenty, I approached the library regarding the books that they had for children to read, one of them being the despicable gender queer. had for children to read, one of them being the Despicable Gender Queer. The book hat, you want pictures. This isn't a reading book. This is an illustrated sex book. You wanna see how oral sex is performed? It's in this book. You wanna see how a child shares a tool, a sexual tool? It's in this book. This is not a reading material. This is a flash hustler for children. I have done more research than just, we're not a bunch of old grannies wanting to purge books that offend us. We're looking at books that are typically harmful for children in the long term. This isn't an agenda that started with little old Brookings. This started on the East Coast with a group of parents who are approaching their school board, wanting to know why this sexual material was reading material. Out of curiosity and my own sanity, I went and I researched our library and found, yeah, we got the same smut. And we proposed it online and we're chasing one little book in the library thinking it doesn't have an appropriate place in our library, when we've got 10 to 20 times that electronically available, either an audio, in an ebook, in a music version. So I'm not talking about chasing a little book in a library. I'm talking about a moral degrade on how we affect our children and the literature that we give to them. Are we upset in Brookings? Yes, we are collecting signatures. Does that go anywhere? I hope so. I hope so. I hope we make the library realize that they're not in charge of rebuilding our families after some sexual deviant accost them. I have a letter from a parent who pulled her children from the library program because she could see the content of the book was declining. We have 200 years of history and out of the 10 books that I reviewed out of her reading list, five of them were all LGBTQ, the Black from Lingo, and that's not about a bird. I mean, there are some horrendous things in proportion to everything that a child can learn. Our library is focused on the gay rights over the child's right to have a, an open environment reading. Books that were donated onto the table showed grandparents taking a bath with their child and washing them in the appropriate places. Give me a break. That isn't a healthy book. That's showing how children can be touched and vandalized at a very young age. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, ma'am. Ma'am, may I see the book? I've never seen it. I just wanna see it.
Don't destroy it.
I will not.
Cause it's the only proof I have that these people deny that.
I want the information, that's why I'm here.
Kaitlin Coleman is next. She can invite us all to the fair.
Yeah, let's lighten things up. I don't enjoy, um, the things that you guys have to deal with right now. It's a heavy room right now and I don't envy you. But to make things a little lighter, the Curry County Fair is next week. Starts Wednesday, goes till Saturday. We've got lots of great things coming. We've got a full carnival. We have lots of good vendors. We have, um, great entertainment. We have the bowls coming in on Thursday night. We have a concert on Saturday, Friday night and Saturday night. Lots of good food options and lots of opportunity. So make sure you come and join us. And if you have any questions, feel free to give us a call at the office or visit our website. Make sure you get any entries in. Also, if you have any fun things that you have made over the last year or grown, get an exhibit number and share what you've done. So, thank you.
Tell your friends.
Thanks, Kaitlin.
Yeah. Yeah, tell everybody.
So next up is, is, uh, presentations. Thank you, everybody, for coming this morning and your public comments. We got quarter to 10.
Can we maybe do the Sam Sarah?
Sam Sarah? We could, yeah. Cause we, did we put 15 minutes for Sam Sarah? Yeah. So Christian, come on up. So we'll, we'll move presentations, we'll go B first. Presentation of Sam Sarah Vehicle Assess Asset Management System, Christian Houston Floyd. He's a Sam Sarah account executive, very sharp young man. I met him the other day. He's learning how to windsurf at, at Floris Lake. So how's that going? And he's still alive?
Oh, it's really fantastic.
Good.
Can I, um, can I click this or can I stand there or?
Well, we got it, we got a mouse somewhere.
And a keyboard.
Yep, yep. Grab that and, yep.
Oh, there we go. All right, can I start?
You're, you're up.
All right. So everyone, thank you so much for being here today. I really appreciate all of you guys for being so involved in your government. You know, regardless of what side you stand on, obviously like you care about the community. So really appreciate that. I just wanna say, just introducing myself, I spent the last couple, this week, I was only supposed to come up for this one meeting, but I spent the whole week here. I've been staying over by Floris Lake. I think what you guys do is absolutely, this place is absolutely beautiful and I appreciate all the, the public funds that go into maintaining this place, right? Like, there's a lot of work to do. So, a little bit about the company I work for, I work with cities and counties and schools all over Washington and Oregon, and you can see here, some of the schools are yellow, some of the cities are blue and counties. This is really just a small portion of the cities and counties we work with. These are just the ones we can show. But basically what we do is we help these counties reduce the costs of their heavy equipment. So we'll get into it later, but the road department alone has about $5 million of equipment on its books and it has $200,000 a year, I think, in fuel burned, right? So how can we help with that?
Say that figure again. Forgive the interruption. On the fuel?
I think it was about $200,000 a year in fuel burned.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, that was maybe last year, probably 300 this year.
Yeah.
100 for road, 100 for vehicle.
Okay. So just high level, my company sells these items to basically these boxes you can plug into heavy equipment to understand how efficiently they're operating, how much fuel they're burning, et cetera, and I'll get on to that. But just the last thing, all this slide is to just show that like, we're a big, serious company. You can look us up later. We work with Denver, Boston, the whole of Tennessee has a contract with us. There's hospitals, there's largest food distributor in America, there's a bunch of different, you know, schools, et cetera. Right? Cool. Now, the items we're talking about are basically this little box here. It's about the size of a deck of cards and I have one in my own vehicle. And it basically, my own car, and it connects it up to the internet. And so now, you know, say John was back in the office and he wants to understand like, how well is my vehicle functioning? How much fuel is it burning? Is the check engine light on? He can basically see that from his computer, right? With various levels of access control so that make sure that only he can see it or only people we want to see it can see it. So we have these asset gateways. So these go on vehicles, on, um, on like trucks and heavy equip, and then these go on like heavy equipment. So you guys might have various dumpsters that you wanna track as well. Now, to just give you an example, I usually work in the Pacific Northwest, but I was out in Alabama recently. It's a big city there called Hoover. And they said to me, "Christian, we think this is really great. We wanna bring costs down in our city. We have 300 vehicles that we want to put these on." And they came back to me a couple weeks later and they said, "Uh, Christian, we wanna buy 225 of them." And I said, "What happened to the other 75 vehicles?" They were like, "Oh, we didn't realize 75 of our vehicles hadn't even received fuel last year." So they had 75 public, you know, funded vehicles that just sat and didn't move at all. And it's not cause these city employees are lazy or don't want it. It's, it's a big operation. You guys are running a, a government, right? And so it's understanding that. So they ended up selling a bunch of them. They reduced the vehicle downtime by 28%. They created a motor pool and then they were using far fewer vehicles but achieving a lot more. And at the same time, they reduced idle time by 20% and fuel consumption by 10%. So let me just look at the time here for me. Okay, cool. So yeah, you can see that the road department alone has, you know, 300,000 in autos and pickups, 180, 30, 100, 830,000 on dump trucks, you know, 2 millions of loaders, excavators and backhoes. And that total amount basically tallies up to about $5 million of equipment. Cool. So we actually put a couple trackers on Mr. Christensen's car to just understand some anonymized data. And there's just some, some basic things, but you know, we could see he was using the vehicle for 1.1 hours a day. This is just a, a little trial, so, but we got some other good data from it. So in the last month, we can see he, I'm gonna call him out here. He idled for seven hours and 21 minutes, 14% of the time. And this was, actually, this is totally okay, right? I've seen counties, uh, there's one county in Colorado I won't mention, they actually found, oh, sorry, it was remote. Their guy, uh, their team was idling 50% of the time. And I totally understand their situations, you know, like I'm, it's up to you guys to use this tool. But a vehicle that's idling for two hours takes a gallon of fuel. So this, for, for Mr. Christensen, he wasted, not wasted, but used an extra 18.75 dollars of taxpayer money this, this year, uh, this month. Obviously, that's totally fine in the context, but over a large fleet, if you start getting a lot of that, that can matter. Okay, cool. And yeah, basically, his vehicle spent about $818, you know, last year, I mean, this past month. Okay, so what we're gonna do is if it's okay, Mr. Christensen's gonna continue to run a trial. You guys will see the data. And then it's you guys and the citizens and who make a decision on something like this, right? So a couple things we could help you with, as I understood, you know, maybe there's a motor pool and it's not really clear, you know, which department needs what vehicles. And so we'll be able to help you understand which departments are utilizing vehicles a lot and which are, which are running dormant. I heard there was a little bit of stuff on missed preventative maintenance dates. So we can actually help you understand scheduled maintenance and give you an alert when a vehicle runs to a certain amount. And by the way, we get inbound interest from military bases all the time for precisely this type of thing, holding government accountable, lowering costs, understanding we're, making sure we're taking care of things. Another thing that can happen is we know during emergency events, first responders can be all the way out and, did you mention Agnes or, and there's no cell service there. These boxes have a dual SIM card that can hook onto any local cell service. So we've actually tried it up there and this will provide you an ability to find a vehicle in a dangerous situation. And then, whoop, let me close this. And then the last thing is we can encourage vehicles to use our ODOT filling stations because you guys get 50% less whenever you spend fuel at those locations. Cool. Just very quickly, I'm gonna show you what this looks like. So we can see Mr. Christensen's car right here. We can actually see how well its engine diagnostics are performing. His check engine lights off, we've got his fuel, we've got battery voltage, we've got load. If any of these things ever go out of whack, we can send a real-time alert to someone. And this is very controlled onto who will get access to it. So this would be a decision for you guys to decide who has access to this information. You can see here, we have an overview of the maintenance for the vehicles we have. We have an area to make logs. Now, one of the best things is if you guys ever want to sell a vehicle back to the public, and I know this is a way sometimes that the county recoups a lot of funds, you'll have detailed logs of what has happened with the vehicle at any time, and that really improves trust and asset resale value. So you'll be able to see the first time this fault code fired. We can see, you know, all of the data is recorded on when this fault code was fired and any work that was along with it. Cool. We also have preventative and scheduled maintenance. So my car, it will remind me every 180 days that I can change my tires or every certain number of miles I change my oil. And we all know that an ounce of cure is worth a pound of...
An ounce of prevention.
An ounce of prevention, yeah, yeah. They didn't teach me to speak at this place. Okay, cool. Last couple things, we're not gonna go into everything today. I think in the future, maybe like a longer Zoom meeting to see these things, but here's another example, it's like a dormancy report. So you see this all the time, like the example I shared with that city in Alabama. In the last, during our trial, there's two items that never moved, right? Now, this is because actually, the secret here is those items weren't plugged in and that was intentional. But this would be an example. You're, you're gonna see things that have never, ever moved. Maybe like a snowplow or something, that makes sense. But there'll be other things that, that will surface and be like, why do we, why do we own that again? Maybe we can sell that and use it for something else. And then, you know, utilization reporting, et cetera. Okay, cool. There's a couple other items I could go into here as well in the remaining four minutes, but I just wanted to open up to any questions or any thoughts that anyone might have or...
Any, any questions from the board? We got, we got one from, a couple from the public, Dallin? I go.
Two questions. Cell service or does it transmit a satellite?
It has both, so it can actually see where the vehicle is in an emergency situation. But typically, it's based off of cell service.
And then, then does it track every single location, every movement? Even if it's towed, it's safe, they still track it? Where it is and where it's going?
So I had my car towed a couple months ago and I thought maybe someone stole it or something. I live down in San Francisco, so that stuff happens more, more commonly. But then I found it immediately and it was in the, in the car place.
One more, is it pretty easy to detach if somebody wanted to disconnect it or is it secretly installed with armed guards and stuff or?
Yeah, they have ninjas that come out in the middle of you to protect it. No, but there's actually, it's, it's pretty hard to detach. You can tuck it under the dash and it's, it's very hard to take out. Now, actually, the battery continues to beep even if it's disconnected. And there's a way to put a smaller tracker and hide that elsewhere in the vehicle, but obviously, we wouldn't share where that is.
David, we got one minute for one question, David.
Yeah, um, what's it cost?
So these ones, yeah, yeah. These ones cost about $18 per vehicle, per month.
What's the whole service cost on a monthly or what's it cost?
So about, so it would be about like, I think it would be about like $10,000 a year for something like this. It depends on how many vehicles you have, right? So for the road department, about $10,000 a year to help improve, you know, save money on a $5 million budget, right? On a $5 million pieces of equipment, if you can even eke out like 10% on that, that more than pays for itself. Yeah.
And looking down the road, we might, there might be grants available and we'll, we'll do more, maybe a workshop on this and, Rich? You got 15 seconds. Yeah, well, we, we'll talk about it later. You'll, you'll, we'll have Sam Sarah back and do a workshop on this and...
And I think, I think the real thing here is, is to spend some time, look at it. Obviously, I'm a salesperson, I'm selling something, right? For you guys, it's really like, you'll have the data here and you can see for yourself, that's what's really cool, before you guys go ahead and look to purchase anything. You'll be able to see if the cost benefits and it seems like some people think so, so far, but that's up to you guys to decide.
Scheduling recommendation, I think you'll approve of.
Okay, cut down on that stuff too, stuff with vehicles.
Okay, it's 10 o'clock on the nose. Good job, Christian.
Thank you so much for having me. I really appreciate you all.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I talked to Economic Development Assistant Miranda Plagie and also TLT Chair Leslie Wogginson to see if they could possibly go from 10:45 to 11:15. We take break now. We do the Consumption Tax 10:15, the Animal Control at 10:30, and I think it'll work very well.
They're okay, they're okay with that?
Well, I mean, we've got two contractors waiting to speak. Half of the committee is here, OCA's here. I'm stepping out of training to do a quick introduction, so that's up to you guys.
And, and I apologize if, if Economic Coordinator Matters would have been available, I would have asked her first. It's just a recommendation, so right now, I think we have to go to break, but that would be...
You do.
It's 45 minutes from now. Yeah, I feel bad, but we had a long public comment period.
Yep. So 10:15, we'll be back at 10:15. We'll break right now for, until 10:15. Thank you, folks.
One of the things I really appreciate about our entire region is that we embrace who we are, and I think that's what unifies us. Once the timber and fishing industries collapsed, it took us a long time to get back on our feet. People didn't quite grasp the idea that once these jobs left, they weren't going to get other family wage jobs, and it crippled us.
Things were getting really dire, so we just thought that this was an opportunity to maybe look at that public land a little differently and how it could bring more dollars into our region.
The Wild Rivers Coast is so unique because there are more wild and scenic rivers here than anywhere else in the lower 48 states. The scenic beauty is just amazing. There's so many different places to go, from the national forest down to the protected ocean, and it's just a really special place.
I guess I didn't really know how special it was, though, until I moved away to Portland and came back and saw all the potential here.
We're uncrowded, we're unspoiled, and we're a little difficult to get to, but my God, once you come here, you fall in love.
We just thought if we could pull people to come into this Wild Rivers Coast and stay longer and explore a little farther into our backcountry, there was a lot of opportunities for them to experience.
I think our whole future is at stake here. This area is ready to go, we just need to give it a little kick in the butt.
I'm gonna be honest, when the rural tourism studio came here, I was skeptical because I didn't see far enough ahead that we actually could collaborate regionally, and I'm pleasantly surprised, it's been amazing.
The Rural Tourism Studios was the first time we were able to come together as a region to talk about the future of our economy.
If we can have a strong tourism economy in this area, it's gonna benefit the whole community.
We have to rely on ourselves, and I think through this program, it's sort of opened our eyes to what we could do when we work together. Community leaders really focused on three areas: outdoor recreation, food and agricultural tourism, and really building community relationships.
In our area, a lot of the food that's grown all gets shipped away, and so now, we're realizing that we can capture some of that local food that's grown here. The Eat Fresh and Local Action Team has hosted a series of networking events, bringing together the area growers with the area vendors, so that we could have more local food available to the visitors to our area. And now, we're seeing more local food in our grocery stores, in our restaurants, and we have a new local food co-op.
We created a farm trail from Bandon to Port Orford. We did nine U-Pick farms, and it just gained traction, and people loved it.
Langley's is less than 500 people, it's very small, so we have to bring in tourists, and being on the farm trail, even though it's just beginning, has really helped do that. We really wanna make it a destination for anybody. My mom and I began Dragonfly Farm just three years ago. When I found out that I could grow a seed and turn that into food, it was like, oh my gosh, why wouldn't you do this? I just quit my, my day job and I just signed the paper to be an official co-owner of the farm. This is what I wanna do for the rest of my life, and grow with the community.
Out of the Outdoor Recreation Action Team, we came up with a series of maps that show where the best places to go recreate are. We know where we're gonna send people now, and we got a great map that shows all the best places to go see.
For us to get a mapping project done to this extent is pretty impressive. We're patting ourselves on the back. I don't know anybody else's, but we're doing it.
From that, we decided that there was some places that needed help, so we came up with a mountain bike plan, and we also worked on designating a state scenic bikeway. The Outdoor Recreation Action Team was also looking at how we can make scuba diving better in this area, so we came up with the idea for a scuba fill station. So now, people that wanna come and dive in this area, they can dive for multiple days because they can get their tanks filled up again. When I started the rural tourism studio, my business, South Coast Tours, was really small, and now, we've grown to about five or six guides, and we're doing tours all over from Brookings all the way up to Coos Bay.
Overall, tourism is on the rise here, we've had a bang up last two years, and it's like a breath of fresh air down here.
My hope for the area is that we still keep that sense of place.
Loving a place to death is a big concern that I have, and it's a balance. We're gonna promote tourism, but we wanna do it in a sustainable way. One of the biggest reasons that this area's been so successful since the tourism studio is the people that are involved. We have a lot of great, motivated, smart people who understand the need to promote tourism in the right way, and it's really all about the people.
When you live in a rural community like we do, from Bandon down to Brookings, and you're strapped for cash, relationships are crucial.
As a community, I think you need to come together and find out what your mission and goals are collectively, then you can work into smaller groups, knowing that you have the backing of the whole community behind you.
As long as everybody's just super excited about it and passionate about what they're doing, and they can work together, then anything's possible.
Own what you have, and don't try to be something that you're not. It's gonna be hard, it's gonna take a long time, so roll up your sleeves and just dig in with an open mind.
Wildfire, as everyone knows, has emerged as one of the, the big, major issues affecting Oregon, and for that matter, all western states. A real actionable response that's including, how do we fight fire, actively managing our forest so that we don't have the fuels out there, and how are we gonna protect communities from smoke exposures? The council's really set up to have a comprehensive strategy that's based on action and based on protecting our communities.
The primary focus we, as a board, have come through with is that in researching the policies for fire management, yes, prescribed fire has its place on the landscape, but not during fire season. We, as a county, passed a proclamation that says, once the state fire marshal declares fire season, it'll be nothing but full suppression, and recently took a resolution to the National Association of Counties, essentially says that they support coordination between agencies and local governments for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens regarding fire, prescribed fire, fire season, anything that affects our citizens.
This is Lily Morgan from Josephine County, and we are at the Rogue Leadership Forum today, looking at the best possible partnerships that we can come up with to fight the fire issues and the smoke issues that we're facing in southwest Oregon. So looking forward to coming up with solutions and the partnerships to get the job done, so we don't face what we had the last few years with catastrophic fires and smoke that invades our communities for months to come. So this is a good opportunity, and we hope to be successful in the outcome.
Seeing so many people come together has really been exciting for me, because there's a lot of expertise, there's a lot of resources, and as we attempt to do a shared stewardship approach to keeping people safe, it's really...
So what we've been working on, in a nutshell here, is a journey in conjunction with Curry and Josephine County on a consumption tax, a sales tax, we've worked on several different aspects of this. We're warming up here in Curry County to the seasonal approach for six months. I've got some notes here, there's a little bit of pressure on us, though, if we wanted to get it on the November ballot, according to our clerk, we'd have to get done by basically the third week in August. Is that the information that, that you're getting from your clerk, and is that still the, the path you're, the path you're looking for there?
Yes, in fact, if I can, I'll just kinda give you an update where we stand, because we've had a lot of, we get a lot of input and stuff, we put on four, the commissioners put on four public forums, two in Grants Pass, one in the Illinois Valley, and one out in the Merlin area, North Valley. And what we did is basically, we have, and to this date, we have not landed on what we are going to do to, to fix our, our law enforcement problem and the sheriff's office. We have not landed on it, however, I think you're absolutely right, what we are, deadline to put a ballot measure and a question and the ballot measure itself on the ballot has to be to our county clerk by August the 18th, I believe. We are getting ready to land as the Board of County Commissioners and refer something to the ballot, but I'm gonna just kinda go over and this, and this may help you. We had 11 different ideas that came back from the forums, and then vetted every one of those to see if they're, if they're efficacy, part number one, do they cover the bill? What's the features and benefits? And I'll just run through you real quick, we had a county-wide lodging, transient lodging tax, we had a law enforcement levy, that law enforcement levy would be only in the county outside of the incorporated city of Grants Pass, because they have law enforcement already knitted in for their police departments, they've had that knitted in through their own budget and through their own taxing base. We had a business license fee for marijuana production, we had law enforcement taxing district, there again, that would be outside of the incorporated cities, they wouldn't even get a ballot. Absentee property owner registration fee, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, law enforcement commercial activity privilege tax, which would be a business tax on employers of over 25 employees or more. We had an ordinance imposing a 3% seasonal sales tax on retail sales. We had an internet sales question that came up, and we also had one, vehicle registration fee, where when you went to register your vehicle, we put an additional $50 that would go to Josephine County, and they do that quite, quite often across the United States. As gas tax and recreational activity tax, in other words, our trips down the river through Hell's Gate excursion would have a, a kind of a luxury tax, if you will, a recreational activity tax, which points right at the visitors that come to see here and use our, our facilities. And going down through these, the law enforcement levy, and we just had a show of hands on every one of these at these meetings, the three that popped to the surface were the law enforcement levy and the law, let's see, law enforcement taxing district. Then we start to dissect these, the rest of them, of course, vehicle registration fee was, we looked at that, it did create about $4 or $5 million here in Josephine County, but looking at Statutory, that money has to go to roads, bridges, and, and highway maintenance, it cannot go to law enforcement. So that one was out. The gas tax, the very same thing, and at $6 or $5 a gallon, gas tax was really not popular, and so, and here again, that would have to, recreational activity tax, only covered about a million dollars. And so, and here again, that would have to, recreational activity tax only carved out about $1 million. And our charge here for the sheriff's portion of law enforcement is around a $10 million ask. County-wide transient lodging tax, the city already torpedoed that by putting they raise theirs, so we can't raise ours. Law enforcement levy, when we take carve out the city of Grants Pass and that 26,000 votes, when we carve that out, we have to then amortize that $10 million ask over all of the assessed value outside of the city of Grants Pass, that incorporated city. So when we did that, it came up to $1.86 a thousand tax property tax, either on the levy or on a law enforcement taxing district. The levy would have a drop dead date, and the taxing district would be in perpetuity until the voter took it off via petition. So those two really, and we know, our history tells us, that number one, we'll never get a property tax over a dollar anywhere, anywhere, anytime in Josephine County. So the $1.87 is just an absolute no for people. And one of the things was that they liked the looks of it, but they didn't like the price of it. And when they liked the price, they said absolutely not, do not raise my property tax. We love $0.58, do it some other way. So the only thing that is rising to the surface at this late 11th hour, or actually, we're at 10:30, we're not at 11. Was the ordinance imposing the 3% seasonal sales tax on retail sales. Now, locally, what that does for us. When I gave the presentation to the city council, they were looking for $2 million to correct their law enforcement shortage. This, and I better clarify something. I think when I gave presentation to y'all, our anticipated take was $10 million over that six-month period. We had an economist at state level run our numbers for our county. He came back at $18 million revenue generated for that six-month period. And so when we looked at that, now 44%, which is the city of Grants Pass, will get 44% because they're 44% of the population. That wrote them a check for approximately $8 million. With that, they have $1.79 law enforcement levy, operations levy. They're looking at taking a dollar to the $1.20 somewhere in a dollar. Often, property tax relief to every property tax owner in the city of Grants Pass. Now, when you look at that, all of a sudden, you got 26,000 votes that would historically say, "I don't get anything out of this." Now they do. Plus, it fills in the gap that they need to go for. They needed to go for a tax, you know, to shore up their law enforcement also. They don't need to do that anymore. So tax relief for the city of Grants Pass, and it fills their void. It covers the sheriff at right around $9 million. The 5% going back to the merchants, and I'll get to that in just a minute. 5% going back to the merchants constitutes $900,000 in Josephine County at the merchant keep for doing the work. And the city of Cape Junction for law enforcement, which they don't have law enforcement now because they've never had a resource for it, a source for the money, they now get roughly $400,000 annually for law enforcement. So when you look at it holistically, and I'm telling you, I'm gonna tell you just straight up, this is a heavy lift. One of the entities in Josephine County that is just, and we talked to them yesterday, that has said, their group is Chamber of Commerce, said, "Absolutely, we will not back this." And I said, "I don't know if I want to be, would want to be on the wrong side of that as a merchant or as anything else." And the reasoning is they think that it will pirate, people will pirate over to Jackson County, and I get that, I understand that fully. But I also look at $5 to $6 a gallon and 3%, I don't think anybody's gonna go to, or go that far to save 3 cents on the dollar. But they might, but I think they won't do it very often, or they won't do it for very long. We're also looking at Jackson County, and again, like I said, they said, "Not yet." I think everybody, and at the state level, we're starting to get lobbyists call wanting theirs pulled out. Well, you know, okay, you gotta pull us out too. And this is starting to get some buzz around the Capitol.
So Dan...
At the tip of this beer, and I don't mind being, I'll put the target on my back all day long. If I can fix a problem in Josephine County. I'm not a state legislature, I'm not a federal congressman or a senator anywhere. I'm a doggone commissioner for Josephine County, and I've got a hell of a problem that I'm facing come in November.
Dan, thank you. We're gonna interrupt you here, appreciate if you'd listen in. Got three minutes, I'm gonna ask the board to consider this. We have less than four weeks. If the three commissioners, plus the two commission candidates for the 2022 November election, plus the city representative, preferably either the mayor or the city administrator from each of the three incorporated cities, a sheriff's representative, and a road representative, that would be 10 people. We have a workshop immediately next week. I'll refine this plan through Josephine County, and we'll see how far we can get on this if we truly want to roll up our sleeves and get to the November election. So that's what we're up against here. I'm talking to people, and they're more favorable than I would have thought to the six-month idea, the concept. I don't know if Curry County wants to do 3%, that would be up to this 10-person task force to work on. It would need to be and have everybody's buy-in. And the idea of helping the cities, Brookings, for example, 28% of the Curry population get 1.4 million. And that could also be a way to help back with the cost of the jail. You know, we could come up with that concept. Nothing could be changed with the voters without voter approval. So can I make a motion, or go ahead, Dan? We're right down to the wire here, I'm so sorry.
Can I help you out a little bit? I'd love to help the commissioners. We just, we just draft, we have a draft of our ballot language, and that's very, very important. The ballot language and the explanatory statement on your ballot is very, very important. And then you stick with that in your narrative to whoever you talk to. We thought we would get more pushback. I'm really surprised at the Chamber of Commerce. I wouldn't want to be on the backside of saying, "I don't want this." And one other question, we did ask the chamber, the chamber manager and the chairman of the board, saying, "Okay, first off, can we change your mind?" And she said, "Probably not." And then the sheriff asked her, "How hard are you going to fight this?" Well, we have a person in town, he's quite well off, and he has a number of restaurants, and he has a number of colleagues here, and he is going to, he's already, in fact, he's already, I heard this morning, he's already ordered yard signs against, we don't even have anything in writing yet, but he's got yard signs already against it, that's how hard he's gonna push. And I said, "You go right ahead and do that, but I'm not, I'm not gonna be afraid. I will not be bullied on this by anybody, I don't care who they are." But the main thing is, is I'm hired, you're hired, you are elected to fix problems, and this is a tough one because this has been a controversial thing. I use "sales tax" as two cuss words in a row. But what I will do, Commissioner Boyce and the commission, I'll send over what we have that'll probably help you along the way as far as your explanatory statement, our ordinance that we have to put in an ordinance before we can do that, and a copy of our ordinance that we are getting ready to approve. You know, but we, right now, we have not announced if this is where we're gonna land. Just talking, as talking to people that went to all of the forums that we had, said, "You know, there was one thing that everyone, every, just, I think two people in each forum, and raised their hand." But in every one of them, 96% of the people at the forums raised their hand and said they wanted that sales tax to go to the voter for their approval, for their approval or deny. And that's the important part of what you're doing as the board of county commission. You're not passing judgment, you can give out information on how it works, but at the same time, all you're asking is that, "Should I put this on the ballot?" And I don't think, I want to be on, "No, I don't think I want your opinion as the voter." That is not good politics.
No. Dan, we got a couple questions for you.
No, I don't have a question. My question to you, Dan, is Christopher Pash. Is your main sales point to your public that, you know, we need law enforcement to protect you?
Our main, our main sales point to the public is that we have a real, I hate to use the word crisis, but if we don't do something in November to show the sheriff's office and all his deputies that he has left, we've lost five in the last two weeks to other entities because they're unsure of whether I have a job.
Yep.
And so, you know, our recruiting is way down. We can't get anybody to come to work here because of the same thing. So what we're looking at is, we have to put this on the ballot in November. It has to be passed in November so that we can ramp up. And April 15th, it will start. If we don't, and I've had, people, the chamber said, "Well, we'll just come back in May, we've got another bite at the apple." And I said, "No, we don't. Statutorily, sheriff will have to give those 60-day notices on May 1st before the May election." He won't have an office by that time.
Okay. The other thing, the other thing that I have had a question about, I just talked to council about, is our timeline for getting this, because this would have to be notified, noticed in the paper and everything else for a ballot question. So on the time crunches that we're gonna have on that, because I believe that's two or three different times it has to be noticed in the paper.
That's why I think, you know, if I send this stuff over to you, I'll send it over just as soon as I get off here. I'll send you our ordinance that we drafted, and also the draft of the ballot measure, you know, the language, and maybe that might help you in saying, "Yeah, let's do this if it helps you make your decision, yes or no." You know, we're really up against the wall here, and I don't know your situation, if you are in a similar situation, but...
Of course we are.
There's a letter to the editor, it says, "It's time the city and the county work together to solve this problem countywide once and for all." We're done having, you know, these little patches on that tire. We're now in time for a new tire.
So Dan, we've got to get to another call here. So thank you, I'm very anxious to get the ordinance, the information that you offered. I appreciate our previous meetings, we'll be right back to you. Do we have an agreement with the board here that we want to move forward on this?
Yeah, we can, can we put together that meeting quick enough?
We'll run that by Council Pope and determine if that's gonna be possible for next week.
Now, what we did here is, I gave a presentation to the city council, and their straw vote, it was 6 to 2 in favor of moving this to, you know, just giving us, "Yes, put this on the ballot." And we're not gonna put multiple things on the ballot, only one thing. And they're just 6 to 2, "Put this on the ballot." I'm gonna solidify that tonight at your city council meeting. Same thing with the city council in the city of Cape Junction, is another incorporated city we have here. And they were on board, I talked to G. Dan Miles, she said, "Yes, we're gonna be on it." And I think what we're gonna do is, we're gonna try to get all elected officials, the three commissioners and the sheriff, all on one stage, and be completely in solidarity when we roll this out to the public and say, "This is what we're going to put to you on the ballot for your approval."
All right, thanks. Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
We'll try to put, if you can get a meeting together, I'm available next week.
Got my fingers crossed, next week.
You got anything?
Anything I can do to help, just let me know. You know, my door's always open to Curry, you're one of my favorite places to visit.
Thanks, Dan.
You're my favorite commissioner, by the way. Thank you, Dan.
Go, butter me up, Court.
Okay.
I'll let you go and get back to your business at hand.
All right. Thanks, bud.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Chris, you got any?